...to this, the regular meeting of the Anderson City Council. At this time, I will call upon Councilmember Harris, who will introduce our guest, will lead us into the invitation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
As you all know, I often, and I've got this, I'm pulling my mask down. I've had those shots, and I'm gonna pull it back up in a minute. But when I'm speaking, I mean, I really wanna leave it down because I can't understand other people when they have theirs on. And I want you to understand that you don't mind. I typically get asked some minister or someone who leads a congregation, a church, to do our prayer and our pledge when it's my turn. But there's certain people that exemplify a servant's heart. Their whole lives are spent doing for others. And I want to acknowledge tonight Phil Webb. He's not only a good friend to all, but he's a great businessman. He started the business, his business, in 1980 from a little hardware store in Heflin, and now he has expanded to six locations in central Alabama. I told him if I were to list all of his accomplishments, all the boards he's on, we would be here all night long. But one thing, one significant board is the Alabama Power Board. He's also in the Great Birmingham Home Brothers Association. He's chair of the MDA. He is with the Noble Bank and Trust. He's on the Calhoun County Economic Development Council. The white place. You keep, it keeps on going and it keeps on going because this man has given his life for others. And I want to acknowledge him and I want to thank him for being a friend to me, to my family, to so many other people. And I want to welcome Phil Webb, who walks the top, to give our prayer and our pledge tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris, if we could all bow our heads in prayer, please. Father, we all come to you this evening here in the city of Anderson to thank you, Lord, for creating us, for creating the world that we live in, creating the positions that we serve you, God, and we serve others in this wonderful city, county, state, and world that you created. Father, these people in this room and many others, they love you, they know you. They want us all to come together to help where we live, to help people, to serve people, to show love in one direction and one partnership that you created us to go, Father. These people in this city, wonderful men and women, they do care, God, and we ask that you be with all of us. You're our leader, you're our hope. You give us heaven. You forgive us for our sins. Father, we pray to you. Bless all of us. Continue to bless us. We need you, Father. We need to ask you daily prayer to help us. We love you. We thank you. And we're always here, God, because you give us opportunity. You created us. Thank you, as we just celebrated, you giving your son, Jesus, to die for all of us, to die for our sins, brought him back to life. And he's here with us. Thank you, God, Jesus, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Lord.
Okay, let's go to the floor. Will the clerk please follow the roll? We'll establish a reading.
Councilmember Jenkins? Councilmember Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Present.
Councilmember Harris?
Present.
Mayor Draper?
Here. A quorum is established. Is there a motion to waive the reading of and approve the minutes of the April 6, 2021 meeting?
Summoned.
Is there a second?
Summoned.
Will the clerk please follow the roll?
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Yes, those minutes are approved. Mr. Foster, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. With that, I will move that we adopt the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please follow the roll?
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Yes, the agenda is adopted. To begin with tonight, we have three proclamations. Let me ask first, Mr. Valley, I guess you're here for National Historic Preservation Month?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else here with you? If you would, please come to the podium. And I might come to read the proclamation. And if you'd like to say a few words, please do so. Again, this is John Valley, who is here for National Historic Preservation Month. I'll read the proclamation now. Whereas National Historic Preservation Month has been observed every May since 1973, and whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for economic development, tourism promotion, neighborhood revitalization, fostering local pride, and maintaining overall community character while enhancing livability. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas this place matters, has been designated as the theme for National Preservation Month 2021 by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Anderson, do proclaim May 2021 as National Preservation Month and call upon the citizens of Anderson to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. We're proud to be here for this. We recognize the importance of history and preserving that history. We appreciate your role there. We certainly welcome any comment you would like to make to the council or the audience as to Preservation Month.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Appreciate the proclamation and all of your support over the last years as we've gone through our historic preservation. I think we've done quite a few things. Developed design guidelines and approved quite a few titles for historic preservation. And I'd like to thank my commissioners too, who have also been very, very supportive, especially to you and the council. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Mr. Harris. Do you have a person who would like to present this proclamation?
Thank you.
We appreciate you all your efforts.
Thank you.
Did you guys take a picture for this? Because we got three of you.
So I think we must suggest that we do all three at once. I don't like it.
Okay, next, we have Economic Development Week is the dream one here with us for Economic Development Week.
Is that what you do that?
Yeah. Proud to have our Economic Development Director and City Planner here. We've just had a really, really good productive meeting with the Economic Development Partnership. And you know, we all know that economic development is our life in a city. We've gotta generate, not only sales tax dollars, but it's imperative that we bring in jobs in the city as well. And so it's imperative that the city focuses on our efforts on economic development. And I'll read the proclamation now. Whereas the International Economic Development Council is the largest professional economic development organization dedicated to serving economic developers. And whereas the International Economic Development Council provides leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members, and partners through conferences, training courses, advisory services, and research, in-depth publications, public policy advocacy, and initiatives such as the Accredited Economic Development Organization Program and the Certified Economic Developer Designation. And whereas economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that still take a route, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. And whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions. And whereas economic developers work in the city of Anderson out of them to attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their regions. And now therefore, the City Council of the City of Anderson Alabama, hereby proclaim May 9 through 15, 2021, as Economic Development Week in the city of Anderson, urges all citizens to support the importance of this celebration, which supports expanding career opportunities and improving quality of life in our community. Date is the 20th day of April, 2021. It's signed, number. Thank you, Ted.
I'd like to bring to town each and every one of you. This is for you and this is for the citizens of Anderson. And if I, EDC, would let me, I would change the name of this Economic Development Year.
Thank you, Ted. Okay, and now we've got another proclamation. Ms. George, would you come forward, please? This is the proclamation for Children's Mental Health Awareness Week. So fortunate that Ms. George addressed the council in our work session, talking about all the things that they're working on, some things that the city can assist with. And it is important that we all recognize the importance of focusing on mental health issues, and particularly children's mental health issues. We certainly appreciate all of your efforts in that regard. And I'm gonna read this proclamation now. And then if you'd like to say a few words, we'd love for you to. And then following the reading of this proclamation, Ms. George's words, we can get, I tell you, just down here. We'll take a picture there. With proclamations. Okay, so I'll read this proclamation now. Whereas good mental health is a key component in a child's healthy development, and children's mental health week provides the opportunity to focus on this important matter while celebrating the accomplishments of children and families affected by mental health concerns. And whereas according to the United States Department of Health and Human Services, one in five children is diagnosed with a mental health condition. And whereas research has shown early identification and appropriate treatment of mental health disorders among children and adolescents provide better opportunities to lead full and productive lives. And whereas children and youth with mental health challenges and their families benefit from access to timely services and supports that are family-driven, youth-guided, and culturally appropriate. They also benefit from the integration of behavioral health and primary care, education, and child welfare. And whereas it is important to children and adolescents along with their families and communities learn about warning signs of mental health disorder and where to attain necessary assistance and treatment. And whereas obtaining a full and accurate diagnosis of a child requires gathering information from diverse sources, including the family, school, and others involved with the child. And now therefore, the City Council of the City of Anderson Alabama, hereby proclaim May 1 through May 7, 2021, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Week. Date is the 20th day, April, 2021. It's signed, number, by the council. Thank you, Ms. George. And if you would, like, say a few words just now.
Okay, sure, thank you. Just want to thank the city of Anderson and the council members for helping the city, Anderson City Schools, bring awareness to social and emotional needs of our children. So when you see the green signage or light or those surrounding cities, just remember, our children deserve the right to have their mental health services under your needs address. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Would members of the council also?
Thank you, Ms. George, for creating awareness. That was something that I wasn't aware of. And so I thank you for educating me. And anytime that I get to create any type of awareness when it comes to our children, I'm definitely here to support it. And I hope that, you know, we can work something out with Jackson so that we can educate the city as a whole.
Thank you for all of you. I'm sure the rest of the country.
Anything else?
Thank you very much for all that you're doing to help our community.
And so again, if we could get everybody with the proclamation right here, so we... Where do you want Jackson?
He doesn't want to be like that. Y'all ready? Stand, maybe, maybe y'all all set.
We're coming.
Yeah, let's definitely open them up.
Just open up.
Give them a little. Oh, you got that there.
I will face that.
There.
No, Boston. Ms. George, just slide down this way.
Yeah, mine, yeah. Yeah, y'all come out and drink. We lost.
I miss everyone who takes pictures.
Going to that? Okay, five, one, two, three. Beautiful. Thank you.
Yeah, see how you're about me already? Yeah, see how some councilmembers, you know, they're up in shape.
Okay, I'd like to thank everyone again for joining us for these very important proclamations. And we appreciate the efforts of all of us involved. Okay, the next item, we have a board confirmation for the Main Street Board. And I'm gonna call everybody up together. And then you'll have an opportunity for questions and comments, if necessary, from council. But this is for the Main Street Board. And this is going to be incredibly important for us going forward, particularly with respect to developing our downtown core, obviously. And the folks who councilmembers have nominated for these positions are all quality. I'm certainly excited that they're going to be here. There's a wealth of experience from each of these nominees. And I anticipate that they will work really well together and certainly for the benefit of the city. And so right now, if Kristen, Phil Jimm could come forward, she's been nominated by Mr. Jenkins. Chief Paulins, if you could come forward. Chief has been nominated by Mr. Jenkins. Christopher Carr Jr., nominated by Ms. Smith. Thomas Zimmerman. Okay, I'm sorry. He's been nominated by Mr. Roberts. Jackie Judkins, also by Mr. Roberts. And Derek Murphy, nominated by Councilmember Harris. I'll tell you, there are two additional appointments to be made here. One by me and one by Ms. Smith. Those will be made at some point following May 31st of this year. Which is one?
Sorry, there's one more who's not on the list yet.
Well, Kristen Moore, I'm sorry. Kristen is actually reappointed. And I apologize. No, 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 I am sorry. Kristen has served on the board and can be diserved on the board. And so I appreciate your service there. And so these are the nominees, y'all, for the Main Street Board. This is on our agenda tonight. We'll be voting on this agenda tonight. And so first, I would like to see if councilmembers would like to make that. You know, any comments or have any questions as to the Main Street Board and those who've been nominated. And then we'll just give, you know, if anybody would like to say anything, let's give a brief opportunity for y'all to say.
I'm gonna say that I do believe now is the time. We have had so many attempts to revitalize downtown. And it's all, you know, it just hasn't worked in the past. But I believe now is the time. I'm seeing so many great things going on in Anderson. And I appreciate every one of you for stepping up to the plate because we're going to make downtown a destination with your help. Thank you so very much.
I'm just super excited as a former member on the Main Street Board. I think that all of you, each of you have a different skillset, which will be announced on this board. So I'm just super excited to see what all of you will do for our downtown area.
I would say something, it's just glad to see we have people who are willing to work, appreciate our work. And we all will find out that if the participants that I selected on the board to, don't act like we're fighting. I mean, I'm really not, I'm really not just calm all the time. I have no problem. We're not, we just have to get together and let's make everything work. If there's anything we can do, anything y'all need from us, please let us know. Because we, Noble Street has to be a destination. And that's going to spark up the city. Thank you, guys.
And certainly a requirement, if y'all would like to say a few words individually, please feel free. And then following that, I'll actually, I don't anticipate they won't say anything, but I'll actually have a public hearing on these board conversations, excuse me, confirmations immediately thereafter. But if anyone would like to say anything, go, just feel free.
Well, I just want to thank you, council, for just the trust that you have in me personally. And I'm sure everyone feels that same way, and Jackson. And I look very forward to using 30-plus years of knowledge and wisdom hopefully gained in retail and business as a business owner. My passion is at the city of Anderson. I've lived here since 1973. And I'm very excited to give it my best effort. So thank you for the effort, the opportunity. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up.
Such a gentleman.
Hey, I'm Kristen. I wanted to say thank you to Councilman Jenkins and everyone on the council for this summation. I'm so excited. I am not from Anderson, and I just recently moved here. So I've had time in a few different cities. And I'm just really excited about the potential that we have here with so many great, great things coming up and news coming out from Jackson. The timing can be more perfect, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chris, you got it.
I appreciate the opportunity to say to you, sir. You guys know that work for you for over two and a half decades. It's a blessing. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And you can count on us working together as a team. I'm looking forward to be part of this. Without question, I've grown up in my adult life here in the city, working for the citizens of Anderson. I want to see it first. And I know that the opportunities that we have. And I also know the opportunities we've missed in the past because we're going to work together to see that fruition and revitalize that Noble Street up here, talk about council.
Okay, one, three.
My name is Christopher Carr. Just so I want to thank y'all for this tremendous opportunity. And don't take it lightly. I've been going to Jackson a long time. We grew up together and went to school. So looking forward to working with them and my church. Y'all have my own church, Anderson Full Gospel Holy Temples, complete support. We love what y'all are doing, especially with Anderson Changers. And we're looking forward to what happens next.
Thank you very much.
I know that I am a reappointed member, but I wanted to come back and say, as being a member before, leaving and coming back, I'm super excited, especially seeing all these new faces and people that are really excited about Anderson because, man, I love Anderson so much. And I share with everybody, so I know that we can make everybody else look as much as we do. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you, thank you. I feel absolutely need to be a part. I love Anderson as well. I do a feast amongst at Christmas time, and I watch how the community comes together and make it a great success. So I know being on the board, we're gonna make Anderson really the best place.
Well, thank y'all very much. We appreciate it. And again, you know, we all recognize how important this board is. And we appreciate, thank you in advance for the work that y'all be doing for the benefit of all of us. Thank y'all so much. Now, the law requires a public hearing on these confirmations. So I'll open that public hearing now. If anyone wishes to be heard regarding these nominations to the Main Street Board, please come forward. There appear to be no one who wishes to speak. I want to close that public hearing. Mr. Foster, do you have any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'll move on then to the consent agenda. And we'll move that we approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Will the clerk please follow the roll?
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Yes, the consent agenda is adopted. Our first resolution tonight is one overruling objections to the abatement identified as nuisances caused by, let's say, building structures for construction as Group 2021-01, unsafe structures. That, the impact of the address or the address of issue is 24 West 10th Street. This is simply a part of the process wherein the city is able to deal with property that ought to be condemned or otherwise remedy. Again, this is a resolution overruling objections that has been filed by the property owner. It's pretty self-explanatory and routine. We do this routinely. Is there a motion for passage and adoption? Is there a second?
Second.
Council discussion. Hearing done. Will the clerk please follow the roll?
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Our first ordinance that we're dealing with tonight, which I anticipate that there will be a motion to table once we get this ordinance on the floor. It's actually required that we get it on the floor in order for us to ultimately table it. But this is an issue that we've been dealing with for several weeks and dealt with it several work sessions. Had a public meeting last week. There'll be another public meeting on this this coming Thursday at the Anderson City Meeting Center. And it is our ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 12, Article 4 of the Code of Ordinances and to adopt regulations governing disposal and pickup of debris. This is on its second reading. We first dealt with this at our first council meeting in April. And so procedurally, I am first, because again, we have to get this on the floor in order for it to be tabled. I am first going to ask for a motion to read by title only. Is there a second?
Second.
The law requires that a public hearing be held on the issue of reading the ordinance by title only. And so now I will call for a special hearing as to that issue. Does anyone wish to be heard as to the issue of reading the ordinance by title only? There appear to be none. I will close that public hearing. Will the clerk please call the roll as to the issue of reading by title only?
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris? Mayor Draper?
Yes, that motion passes. Again, we've got to get this, well, first, let me read it by title only. It is an ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 12, Article 4 of the Code of Ordinances and to adopt regulations governing disposal and pickup of the three. It is on its second reading. So first, I will call for a motion for passage and adoption so that it can be seconded, placed on the floor so that we can get it tabled. So is there a motion for passage and adoption?
Summoned.
Is there a second?
Second.
At this point, I will move that we table. Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please follow the roll?
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Yes, that ordinance is tabled. Our last item of business tonight is an ordinance declaring surplus real property and authorizing conveyance of the same is on its first reading. This, the ordinance itself, it has to do with the Calhoun Theater Building that the city is proposing to sell to an entity that is interested in the public development public development of Noble Street. Uh, it is two things, it's on its first reading tonight. First, again, I will ask for, uh, a motion to read by title only. Most of this is, you know, meets a balance description, a legal description, began to corrupt those as a conveyance to this LLC of the Calhoun Theater property. So is there a motion to read by title only?
Uh-huh.
Uh, is there a second? Thank you. At this point, I will call for a public hearing on the issue of reading the ordinance by title only. Does anyone wish to be heard as to that issue? There appear to be no ones who wishes to speak to that issue or close that public hearing. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll as to the issue of reading the ordinance by title only?
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Dragan?
Yes, and so, again, this is an ordinance declaring surplus real property and authorizing conveyance of the same. Again, this is as of the Calhoun Theater property. This is on its first reading tonight, but I, I see no reason why we can't go forward with this. Is there, is there, unless, uh, I remember the council does not wish to, is there a motion for, uh, immediate consideration?
Uh-huh.
Is there a second? I'll, I'll second that. Don't, don't, uh, well, uh, let's see. Will the clerk please call the roll as to the issue of unanimous agreement?
Uh-huh. Okay.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Dragan?
Yes, okay, uh, again, in accordance with our rules, we, we have, a, a motion has passed where we can consider this tonight, even though it's on its first reading. And so, with that, I will ask for a motion for passage and adoption.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, second, third. Mr. Roberts makes a second. Council discussion.
Uh, I'd like to say that, um, at our last meeting, um, Mr. Fox, I was with the mayor of Birmingham, or the previous mayor of Birmingham, William Bell, that contacted him and explained to him that this person who's interested in this property was a very legitimate person, and he and his father, what I understand, are responsible for renovating downtown Birmingham to a great extent. So I'm just thrilled that after 20 years of that piece of property just deteriorating, that finally somebody was willing to take it on and do something with it. And I think this is just the beginning. I think I can see, you know, one thing happening, another thing happening, and it must run. So I'm just absolutely thrilled that we have the interest of a legitimate person who has the resources to do something with it, something positive. So I, I'm thrilled with myself. Thank you.
I second that. Downtown is the economic value of the city, so I think we're moving in the right direction.
Well, y'all, I'm going to tell you. It's been certainly a long day of, uh, all of a sudden, now, why Aniston, why is Aniston selling this property for only $70,000? If everybody knows the history of Aniston, they know how long that building has been sitting there. And you just get sick and tired of the old mess of, every time you try to do something, someone is trying to find a way to make it a negative mark. If someone wants to do something to a building and they get access to it, that building has been sitting there for years, now that somebody else wants to do something to it, you want to talk about it? Well, let them keep talking, whoever's keeping working. So I thank Mr. Folks, and I thank everybody who was able to have developed a hearing. Um, he's been dead, and he's hit the ground running. So God bless y'all, we're talking today, let's keep on talking. By the end of this day, we'll see what's happened.